We're meeting for Thursday, January 18th, 2018. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Planning Board members present tonight: David Dow, regular member; Niall Shore, the Vice Chair; Paul Bover, regular member; Nicole Fecto. Present tonight is Mike Larue, alternate, and Sean Winston is absent. Also, the Town Planner, Kathy is here. Moving on to public comment session, open to any resident or property owner in the town of Barwick to come forward and talk about anything that's relating to the planning board. Please feel free to come forward if you wish to address the board. We're going to have, we're going to be addressing applications. This is outside of the applications this evening. This is just anything else, a public comment session. Doesn't necessarily have to be about applications. Feel free to come forward.
Is this the only opportunity that the public has to speak is right now?
We're going to have another public comment session afterwards. Are you Misty Boyd?
Hi, Ms.
So, we're going to be moving on to your new business. You'll have an opportunity to speak.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Anybody for public comment session? See anybody come forward. Closed public comment session, moving on to approval of minutes for the January 11th, 2017 meeting. These are the minutes that we did not get because James is gone this week. So, I know that we got them emailed, but I think we should probably wait until next week till we get the paper version so we can look at it. So, motion would be for, I'll make a motion that we table the approval of minutes for January 11th.
I'll second that.
Seconded, further discussion. All in favor? Okay. New business: Conditional use application, residential and holistic healing center. Applicant, Misty Boyd, 8 Wilson Street, MAP U4, Lot 140-1. Kathy.
So, Misty did apply to transition to a business street. Unfortunately, when I went to do a review against the ordinance of her application, I discovered that she was lacking about 1,200 or so square feet for, in order to be the mixed use that she was proposing. And what she was proposing is a holistic healing center in her residence. And that is, you know, a conditional use permit, but as a mixed use, it requires the 10,000 square feet minimum lot coverage for a residential use, and then half of the required acreage, if you will, for the commercial use, which would be about 15,000 square feet. She lacks some amount of that. So, Misty and Joe and I have been talking, and I believe that Misty will be pursuing two other opportunities to make her business happen. I believe she talked to Joe about a possible appearance with the ZBA, and I believe that she may also pursue a rezoning request, similar to what Andrea Burns was requesting.
So, the lot size is supposed to be 15,000 square feet?
Total.
And where at, and that lot is?
12,300 and change.
But if it was in the village overlay district?
Correct.
It would, it wouldn't be subject to that?
Right, yep. That's exactly right.
Did you have anything that you wanted to address the board on? You could come forward to the, it's okay. And just state your name and address for the record, too.
Misty Boyd, 8 Wilson Street in Barwick.
Welcome.
Thank you. So, the couple of questions that I had, I have been talking extensively with Kathy and Joe. I'm just wondering, is there something through the planning department that can be done to change the wording for the overlay zone so that it's an opt-out situation instead of an opt-in situation? Like, the wording? That's one of the conversations that Joe and I had today, and he said that that's a question.
Can you explain that when you're not already in?
We just purchased the property. So, I, I met some of you back in November before we purchased the property, to just say this was our intent for the business, and I've since spoken with Kathy and Joe. So, this piece of it is all new to me. I just found out two days ago that I wasn't coming to meet you folks. Excuse me. Sorry. The final approval part. Sorry. It's no fresh. So, in talking to what my options are to continue this, because my home is, we're ready to serve the residents of Barwick. So, it was just a matter of, at some point, the wording was just an issue because it's an opt-out instead of an in. So, I can answer any questions that you have because I'm just trying to understand it myself.
In relation to the church, which home is yours?
Right next door.
Right next door.
And if, as part of my application, the church has been so wonderful and gracious and has offered me their parking lot. And specifically, especially the, between my property and their shed, there's a good portion of property that's all parking spaces, which they basically said, "These are yours. We just need them on Mondays and Wednesdays and Sunday mornings." And then, when we have workshops, which part of my business is a lot of education workshops, that we could use the whole parking space as long as it was around their calendar. So, we've just been working together to make sure our calendars match up.
Misty's application was very well put together.
Any other questions from the board?
No, I mean, I probably have more than, maybe a comment or so, maybe a suggestion. I know we have the Burns property, which is right around the corner from you, that they would like to opt in because the density requirements are different, and I think that would solve your issue. And I know there's a cost involved with posting that and getting it done, and some time involved, but there is a vote coming in quick, you know, fairly soon. So, would it make sense to actually, first of all, consider some kind of a cost sharing between those two parties? And second of all, you have to do, I think, some work on your property for the residents? Am I mistaken in that?
No.
So, you're going to have to do some, so you, if you had one of the uses available now, is that a possibility where if we have to go to, if she goes the opt-in route, then that could be, that could happen at a later date? I'm just not sure if you have timing to get the whole show on the road and what you're...
Misty lives in the house now, Paul?
Yeah.
And she was hoping to open her business after getting a conditional use permit.
Okay. In the house or, I thought the residence was going to be in the back?
Nope, in the house.
In the house.
Yes.
It's, yeah, the way that the property is set up, there's, there's a perfect door that blocks what will be the wellness center versus what will be our residence. So, right now, the kitchen and laundry room will be shared as staff space, and then there's a door, and the rest is...
Looked like you had everything laid out there. I'm just wondering if you, if, when use at a time can go in, then the second one can come in later.
Which, the only use she's asking for is the holistic health center. And so, she's, she's living in the house legally because it's, you know, it's a residence, but what she can't do is open the business because she needs that extra 5,000 square feet, which she doesn't quite have.
Only, like, not quite 5,000, right?
No.
It's only a couple thousand.
Right. It's like 1,200 and something.
1,200.
Right, yeah. It's just that there's a requirement for 5,000 square feet that she can't meet. The, the thing I'd like to say is, looking at the village overlay district, it is very curious the way it was drawn because it purposely, like, avoids the church and Misty's house and maybe two other lots. And in, in my experience from, and with talking with Joe, all those houses, all those buildings have a business in them of one kind or another. So, it's like, it seems like it would make sense to include them in the village overlay district, wouldn't it?
And I remember talking about that.
I remember talking about that, too.
In vision of Barwick, and we said, "Well, I think only one at the time was a business. That was a quilt shop."
A quilt shop.
Yep, and it's still there.
And then, we, we figured the other two were residences at the time, so in order to avoid any non-conforming or any type of issues like that, we said, "Well, we'll just leave them now, and then they can opt in later on."
They can opt in, yeah.
If they want to reduce, you know, if it's going to be a business-type thing.
Yeah, I was just wondering if it made sense to actually just go ahead and include all of them this time. We're including Andrea around the corner, then there's the church, then there's Misty's house, and then there's two more.
And then you go up, and then you go up to Logan Street, and there's a Roma Joe's, which is, which is in the R1. So, if we, we were talking, I think, the last meeting about all of Wilson Street and then School Street up to Logan Street on both sides.
Do we have enough time for the board to make that proposal, which would at least save the applicant some money?
Oh, yes.
But this would also mean that she'd have to wait until at least June.
I'm not sure there's any other answer.
Yeah, I mean...
Unless she went to the ZBA.
That's...
Which would be faster.
Well, and both things can happen.
Well, that's it. Both things can happen.
I would recommend that Andrea, that both Andrea and...
Play and both.
Yeah, Plan A, ZBA, Plan B, and...
Or move out. You could move out, as Paul was suggesting, which would be the other option.
So, I'm sorry, I missed that piece. The other option, the third option is...
The problem is, you want two uses. So, if you moved out, you wouldn't be using it as a residence. You could use it as a business.
As just...
If you, you know, otherwise got your conditional use approved.
Okay.
Problem is, you can't live there and have the business until this foot, square footage problem is resolved. But you can do one or the other.
Okay. It's good to have options. Okay.
Just a thought, if I can offer.
Please.
Get in your business.
If you could just come to the podium and just state your name for the minutes.
I'm from Civil Consultants. Just a thought, I'm listening to the conversation. Is there a possibility of leasing land from an adjacent owner for a period? Does that satisfy?
No. No, I was going to say, if the church gave you 1,200 square feet, you know, that would be great, but no, that wouldn't, that wouldn't count. Thank you.
I wish there were. Okay.
I think that the consensus of the board, and we haven't taken, like, a full, you know, vote, but I think that we're all in agreement, for the most part, that Wilson Street and School Street up to Logan Street is something that we should probably push forward to the selectment for the town meeting. That would be one part of it, and the other part of it would be going through the ZBA, which Kathy and James would definitely help you get ready for.
I got the application this morning.
Perfect.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you for coming.
So, we, so the game plan would be then, she, we take care of the inclusion of her lot and probably the one that's left, right? Right along Wilson Street as part of the village overlay. And I think the quilt shop, I think they wanted to go either way. I'm not sure. We probably should ask them.
And then it would be an opt-out.
Then it would be an opt-out, which you can opt out if you want, but that requires the same kind of procedure for the meeting.
Then we could take care of the Burns property at the same time.
Yeah.
Question. If we, if we got all of it up to all of School Street up to Logan Street, what if, what if a, what if somebody that wanted to opt out, but it kind of separated others that are opted in, is that like a spot zoning issue?
It's a good point. But, you know, I don't think if you necessarily opt out, you can be in that zone, but you could be grandfathered in to the original uses and...
If someone opted out, the zoning district would just go around them?
Okay.
But it wouldn't be a spot zone.
Okay.
It would just be, you know, moving the boundary.
Especially if it's an opt-out instead of an opt-in, I think.
Can I just ask one more question?
Sure. Just, just come on up so that the microphones can pick you up for our viewers at home.
Thanks. So, as a new, we just purchased this property in November. Like, do we, does every new property owner get an option whether or not they want to opt in, or was it a one time when this all happened, whoever owned the house at the time, they chose?
We didn't include this. This, this was in the R1.
Oh, so that's right, because it wasn't in that particular district.
Right.
Okay.
Well, actually, she's in the CI.
Oh, CI, I'm sorry. CI.
Okay.
Yeah. So, it wasn't in the village overlay initially.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Anything else on that before we move on? We could, we could go back at the end of the meeting and talk about the village overlay. Moving on to conditional use application, medical marijuana production facility, applicant Paper Birch Property LLC, MAP R70-12-1, 357 Portland Street.
So, the board has my memo from the meeting that got basically canceled because of the snowstorm. And Jeff has since sent revised plans just two days ago. I did look at them this afternoon, but of course, there was no time to write a revised memo. So, my recommendation to the board is, is to kind of follow along. He also sent, I think it out, and we have that, too.
I do.
Is that what you emailed us yesterday?
Um, yes.
Yes.
Do you have, I'm sorry, do you have paper copies of that?
Jeff's.
Okay.
I do right here.
And you can follow along, like, my review. He took it full-size.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh-oh.
It's like seven years bad luck.
I brought four sets of large-scale plans and a bunch of 11 by 17, so I don't know who wants what, but I'll just leave them here for the board. Plans really haven't changed all that much, and I'll go through some of the revisions. I'll just kind of start with a brief narrative. If that makes sense, and then we can go from where we are. My name is Jeff Aliva. I'm with Civil Consultants. I'm here representing the applicant for this project that is located, located in the rural commercial industrial zone on Portland Street, Route 4, right across from the Pond Road intersection. The project is to construct a building and build it out in phases. That will be a medical marijuana production facility. We met with the police chief a week and a half ago, showed him the plans that are in your package that haven't changed. It's a single-story building, wood-framed. The first phase is scheduled to have two growing units in it. There are no windows in the building. It's all enclosed. There's just two doors, one door into each of the units. If we look at the site plan that you have in front of you, it hasn't changed from the last revision, but what we've added to the project is we've added the indication for the septic system that wasn't on the original question. We've, again, I mentioned, I met, that we met with the police chief. I've also added some notes on the plan that talk about odor control requirements, an indication of the main DOT driveway permit that we received for the project. And I got to put my glasses on here for the last one. And the requirement from the police chief that the tenants of the buildings register, give their contact information to the police chief so that he has a way to get ahold of them, and if there's a situation where they need to do a patrol out in that area. The plan that you see in front of you that's labeled L1 is the proposed Phase 1 build-out of the structure. It's about 8,500 square feet of single-story building. That would be the first phase. And if you go to L2, that would be the indication of what the project would be built out with subsequent building additions. A Phase 2 infill of the horseshoe would be on the west side, and then a Phase 3 would build out similar 8,400, 8,500 square feet on, to the north. We've designed the stormwater to capture the flow for the final build-out. Pending review and comments from the board, then what we need to do is we need to submit a permit to the DEP for a PBR stormwater, PBR. And I think that's really, that's it. I'm better at answering questions than...
You said the detention area that you're designing is full build-out with the three buildings?
That's correct. And what we did with the sheet on L1 is kind of worked the grades to make sure that the stormwater flow gets to that pond, and that, so that when the build-out comes in the future, all they need to worry about is really the building itself and not worrying about doing more site work to expand the detention pond.
Is this gravel parking?
We have, I've got a paved way that comes in off of Route 4 to, that makes that first turn, and that is in the common driveway area. And then, the proposed on the inside is to be gravel as it comes up into, for the Phase 1 project. We did the stormwater analysis, assuming it was paved, but for thinking for gravel because there really isn't, there's not a lot of traffic that comes in to this use. The intent here is, my applicant is the landlord, building owner. He will lease out the spaces to the growers, and they have, you know, restrictions on how many employees they can have in a space, so there's very limited traffic that comes into that, into that area.
Question on the shared drive. Part of that encroaches on the lot to the east of your lot.
That's right, yep. And there, in the...
How can you do that when you don't own the lot to the east?
As part of the requirement when this lot was sale, sold, they have a shared driveway easement that allows them to build and to maintain.
Precede your application?
What's that?
That precede your application?
Precedes the application, yes. Yes. And I believe in the application form that we submitted, we...
The deed.
I put all the deeds in there, and I believe there's the one in there. If not, I can get that to the board.
Is that because of the DEP road entrance requirement?
Um, I think it's, the, the shared driveway for this lot, I think, is based on the fact of, when they originally did the subdivision out here before, was it seven, eight years ago? You look at what the wetlands are along that, that lot to the north of us, and I think it makes sense. And it's also a restriction of site distance with the DOT. They want, they want shared driveways as much as they can.
Mm-hmm.
And then, for this situation here, the original subdivision plan had that as a shared driveway between those two lots, 12-1 and 12-2, I think.
And 12-2 is just vacant, Jeff?
Is vacant, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. This was a three-lot subdivision that was approved, like I said, I want to say 2007, maybe it was different than that, to create three lots. And this is the first lot that is under development, that would be under development.
Further questions from the board?
Other question for Kathy that may pertain to this. In the, and I haven't looked at the land use ordinance, but there is a table in there that were, and I know for building homes, you reduce the land area by the wet soils or, and there's a gradient there. Has that been looked at?
Not for all three phases because this is a, got it two days ago, so I have not done the calculations for all three phases. The first set of plans you got did not show all three phases. But, yes, I will do that.
But that'll be looked at?
Yes, absolutely.
Is there fencing?
Right now, we're not proposing any fencing. Nope, because the building is enclosed. It doesn't have any, any windows. It has controlled doors. There will be security cameras and lighting around the building with the emphasis on the door areas. The landlord-owner will have his own internet security cameras on the site, and then imagine that the tenants will have their own individual, too, with the caveat that as they build out, they go to the building permit, building office to get a building permit, and they also go to the police department to give their contact information.
What about lighting? What type of lighting is this?
What we have right here is just all building mount light that would be downward-directed LED, so that there would, you know, wouldn't have any spill on the butters. I don't know, I'm looking at the plans here. I don't have a detail for the light on there, but I can add one for that.
And there's, is there a business sign?
Right now, we're not proposing a business sign.
Well, there, it says proposed entrance sign.
I see proposed stop sign.
I see proposed entrance sign right here.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, and that would be off the road. It would be as you come in, the driveway, so that it would be more of a directional if, if the other lot becomes developed, you know, this business is here, that business is to the right. But there's not, not proposing anything up on the road indicator.
What are the hours of operation? I think you outlined it in there.
I did. If we look at the way this goes, in the other projects we've done for, for these and type of situations, it's, some operations are 24 hours that are occupied, since it's, you know, really specific that you have, can have limited number of people in that operation while that works going on. I want to believe that we put, you know, standard business hours during the day, but there is the potential that there probably could be people there working at night in that space.
Are you the applicant? I have, I have some questions for you, and maybe if you wouldn't mind coming to the podium.
Sure.
If, you could just state your name, please.
Paul Vannity.
Okay, Paul, thank you. So, this is just, this is just a facility to allow a place for caregivers to grow?
Correct.
Okay. So, you don't per se have any employees. This is just, you provide the facility, and then do they contact you for scheduling? Like, I need to come in for two hours on this day to come in? How does that work?
I mean, after we would sort of upfront establish whatever business hours we were going to establish, because there could be the capability that they have to be there in the evening, we would have to sort of discuss that, but I wouldn't think they would have to contact me to have access to their facility.
So, you have somebody there all the time who works for you?
No, he's saying they would have access at any time.
Just, they would have access, everybody would have their own access, probably like a keypad on the outside where they can get in and out of their facility. But I personally wouldn't be there all the time.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
I just, conceptual stuff. I mean, is this considered, the category that this is applied under, the conditional use of site plan, is it light industrial or is it...
You actually have a medical marijuana use.
So, that's, that's what the application is for, then?
Correct.
So, is that considered people that are going to be, and that's the only connection that you will have with the facility, then?
Correct.
And will their clients be coming in to the facility?
I mean, there's the possibility that that could happen. There are facilities where they'll invite their patients to come and pick up their medicine. So, that could happen.
So, you could have traffic in and out?
We could have traffic.
Because I heard just a little while ago, light traffic.
Sure, sure. There's also the idea that we could limit that traffic, and, because I know that, from other caregivers, I know that they'll sort of schedule patients one at a time to come in, you know, rather than a free-for-all where they can just kind of come and go as they please.
Another thing to think about is for deliveries, for people getting stuff delivered to there, that's also going to add traffic, whether it's nutrients, lights, stuff like that.
So, we do have a traffic consideration?
Yeah, it, yeah, a little. I wouldn't say it would be much, because each, each caregiver can only have up to five patients other than themselves. So, I mean, that's only five people plus, like, someone delivers stuff to them usually. It'd just be a box truck.
In your package, I have a little bit of description about how, what kind of traffic would come through and how the operations go for this. We've designed a couple of these for other towns, and the, and the way it works now is a lot of the growers that are doing it in their own homes. They typically don't want, or typically don't have their patients come and pick up. Some of them do have, can pick up their house. A lot of times, they go out in their car and they do their, their deliveries. What we're finding is that situations like this is that they will schedule their patients to come at certain times to pick up the medicine, and they don't have patient overlaps. Because if you look at the, what they do is they have very strict controls on the access to their building. So, the building you see here for Phase 1 would be split into two units. Those two units are not connected. They'd have separate bathrooms, separate entities. And what the idea here is, is even, you know, talking with the chief and talking with other chiefs that we've had other projects, there, there hasn't been a crime aspect of it, but everybody is still conscious to make sure that they don't have overlap with, with patients that come to pick up their, their prescriptions. And this is not a dispensary. This is, this is a, just a growing area. And there's definitely a difference in, in the language between what is a production, growing operation compared to a dispensary.
And aren't the dispensaries limited? I think there's only one allowed per county.
I think there is, yeah.
Yeah. And I think York County already has one.
Already has one, yeah.
It's not considered dispensary if people are coming there and picking it up?
That's correct.
No, correct. Correct.
Right. Now, is it, is this facility also going to have, because I know as a caregiver, you can also have an edible license, basically. Would this be a facility to have that as well?
That would be up to whatever the new rules come through.
Okay.
And it'd be up to whatever that caregiver that leases that space.
Okay.
I mean, the question was, is he gonna, is the applicant going to have somebody there? No. He's gonna have, he's gonna lease them the space. They need to come to get a building permit to prove that their, that their odor control requirements meet the standard. We have a note on the plan that talks about how it has to be done and what has to be done for that odor control and how it has to meet the best practices and approved by the building permit. And then he's just going to have his global security to be able to have that on the property. And then each individual DC will probably have their own security on the end.
So he's just, he's just providing the shell of the building?
He's providing the shell.
So, inside, there's going to be separate secured areas, so that everybody wouldn't have access to everywhere? There'd be separate secured areas?
That's right, yep, yep. And most of the, the other projects that I've worked on is that space is at an optimum, you know, the prime here, that they really, they don't even have a really, like, a space for, they don't want a waiting room. They don't want to take the space up for a patient to come and wait and have a place where somebody can congregate, because they want to use that space for other operations.
I have a question, Jeff. So you're saying, basically, that each caregiver who comes to lease property or space inside there, they have to come up with their own odor control plan, which the code enforcement officer here is going to have to approve?
That is correct.
That's an awful burden on the town, though. That's a big building.
Well-
That's a lot of odor control plans to review, don't you think?
Well, I think it would be one odor control plan per person that leases it. And if we look at this, if we look at this building-
Yes.
What, the smallest number of units will be in there would be two. And maybe, maybe one person may want to come in and rent the whole space.
Okay.
But at a minimum, they're, they want more, they need more than 4,000 square feet to be, to make it economically feasible.
Economically feasible, okay, I see.
So, so this building won't be driven up into 10 spaces.
Okay.
It will be into, at the smallest, I mean, at the most, two, probably one.
Okay.
But that's Building One, though.
We're Building One building.
That's the first building, but you have 19, over 19,000 square feet, if I saw this correctly?
At the end, yeah, at a phase-
So that will expand as the buildings build out. And then you may be partially correct that you, you know, you're going to have to do each one separately.
Well, there will be a building permit application that, I mean, there'll be a building permit fee-
For each provider.
-that each unit has to submit. So there's a fee for review for the town for that building permit.
You said you needed 4,000 square feet?
Well, I'm saying a general rule of-
Because your Phase Two building is only 3,200.
The what?
Your Phase-
Yeah, this, this small, that's just the infill, that's right. That may be a small, what I'm saying is that, the first building we have, is the maximum number of units, and it will most likely be two.
All right, I understand.
Yeah, yeah. But there may be somebody else that has a smaller operation that wants that. Most people, most of the operations want as much space as they can get, is what I'm trying to say. Yeah, the Phase Two, that infill in the horseshoe is as big as it gets, is that's, because that's the only distance that we had when the building meets setbacks to be able to put that inside there.
But you're saying now that it'll be, at most, it will be two applicants in the first phase?
Most, yeah, most likely, exactly, yeah.
And it could be one?
It could be one, yeah.
Could we put a note on the plan? Could we make that a condition, that maximum two units in Phase One?
I don't see the need for that, because it doesn't, if it wants to become three, they still have to come back and they still have to pay a building permit fee and have the inspections for that part. So, to me, thinking of the past projects I have, it doesn't make sense that they do, but maybe somebody wants to come in and have a smaller space. I don't know. As long as they follow the guidelines for medical marijuana and that aspect of it, it could, the, Paul could decide to lease a smaller space than what we're showing here.
Can you review the state requirements for licensing and how the town, how the town is going to be getting into this licensing procedure for medical?
I have it because I know it's still up in the air.
So even that, even though the recreational hasn't hit the road yet?
Yeah.
That is not ready to go either?
I think they're still talking about the changes that they want to make to the-
Which will impact medicinal, then?
Yes.
This is only medicinal.
This is only medicinal.
They're not going to leave medicinal a wall.
And there are changes coming down the pike, just like Jeff said. I actually have the main state statute here now, but, of course, I don't know what revisions they're plotting, but, let's see.
Because I understand that it's going to be just more, they're looking for more oversight than what's currently there.
More oversight on the part of DHHS?
Yeah.
Okay, that would be good.
Do we need more expertise on, as far as the town of Burwick, do you think, Kathy, to, you know, someone is familiar with what's going on? Because I know things have not gelled yet, and I don't-
I can put, really, as I understand it, and I may be wrong, but, the reason we're here before you is because we are looking to do this in a separate building in a commercial and do it this way. There, if you are a caregiver, you can grow in your house without telling anybody. So what we're doing here is we're having it more controlled. So as far as, like, rules or regulations, I don't think there's any difference. I think we're, we have more rules and more regulations with something that we know that we have control, we have, we have known security, we have known access points, as opposed to somebody growing it in their house without having to notice anybody. I don't really think there's a requirement that they have to notice the police department if you're growing in your home.
Caregivers don't.
Are you seeking approval for all three phases?
Every caregiver does have to be licensed, though?
I think we want, I want, I want to show all three phases, to be able to show that.
Okay.
But, and to be able to have that in, as it moves forward. But for right now, Phase One would be what the start of the project would be.
So that's, you're only seeking approval for Phase One?
Well, I think I want to show the, all three phases.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But the approval is for Phase One, but you're just, as a courtesy, showing us how it all fits.
Yeah, and then as, and then, yeah, sure. And then as, you know, Phase Two and Three comes, we gotta, we have to go get a building permit for the construction of the building, and then a tenant would have to go get a building permit for the fit-out.
So the answer is, he's actually seeking approval for the entire plan?
For all three phases.
All three phases.
Yeah.
Yeah. And in answer to Paul's question, you know, caregivers do have to be licensed by the state. The town doesn't have anything to do with that. What the town does is designate where medical marijuana production facilities such as this can be placed. And last spring, I believe it was, Burwick made that decision. And this building is being placed where it is zoned to be placed. You certainly, as part of a site plan review, you do have the ability to consult experts. So if the board feels like they want to ask another opinion of an expert, we could talk about what, whom that expert might be, and we could act on that.
I mean, I'm asking that because this is pretty new to most of us.
Yes.
And we've been reading for the last year or so, you know, the medicinal and the recreational, and how one is tied, maybe tied to the other or not tied-
They're not right now, not at all.
They're not, not right now, yeah.
Yeah, just so you know, they're just, they're completely separate.
And I know that, you know, you have private people growing stuff at home as caregivers.
Yes.
And then they have, you know, they're the provider and they have a client. But I kind of see this as more of a, call it, light industrial in a way, because of the, you know, 19,000-plus square feet of building?
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's not a home provider, as far as I'm concerned.
That's right.
That's, this is a light industry.
I don't disagree. I think, I think that it's very similar to a light industry, and, you know, with similar concerns, odor, you know, being one of them.
And that is where we've decided that we do want some light industry in the RCI.
Right. Yep, and that's why you allow this type of facility there, too.
I haven't read through the whole thing yet.
Well, there's a difference between a grow facility and somebody growing at home. A home, you know, a provider who's growing at home. They're limited what they can grow at home.
Correct.
Well, there is a requirement for five plants per?
Yes, caregivers do have, they have, what is it? Is it five patients, six plants?
Five patients, six flowering plants at a time.
Thank you.
The not flowering plants use a whole different ballgame with different heights, have different numbers. So if it's under a foot, you can have unlimited.
And is that, that, the case will be here, I wonder?
Well, yeah, still the caregivers would have-
It's simply a group of caregivers, that's what it is.
I mean, technically, a caregiver could have up to 36 flowering plants at a time.
Yeah.
So square footage was-
So I guess you could see why that he needs, why he's saying that each caregiver would need a large amount of space because they have all these plants.
Well, because if you count, a caregiver can count themselves if they have a medical card, so that's six. So at that point, it'd be 30. And then, I mean, technically, how I, how I'm understanding, if, with the square footage wise, if one person, if one caregiver wanted to grow, let's say, one flowering plant under one light, yeah, their electricity bill is going to be higher. But I mean, at that point, if they want to do it, that's their, that would be their choice, whether, you know, as long as their numbers are still all right with the state. But they're going to use a lot more powers, that's all I'm saying.
I noticed there's a transformer proposed.
Yeah, yeah.
So Kathy, under 825-4 odor control?
Yes.
A1, specific odor emitting activities, the section to describe the odor emitting activities or processes that take place. So prior to approval of the application, we would have to have an odor control plan in place, but we were talking about each time somebody moves in there as a grower, they would have to come to the town, and they would also have to have an odor control plan?
Correct.
So are we going to get a master odor control plan, and then each time that, that somebody comes in, because they want to move in there as a tenant, they would also be providing one? So we're going to have multiple odor control plans?
Yes, you are, for every tenant in the buildings.
But will there be an odor control plan submitted with this application? I thought, you're saying no?
Yeah.
Right.
It's not until there's a tenant who moves in?
Right.
That's right.
So at this point, we have no idea. And by doing it this way, we have nothing to say over what that odor control plan is that's left to the CEO.
But you, but you do, because we're proposing to put, you have the ordinance that talks about it in that-
825-4 A.
-odor control. But also, we can have notes on the, on the plan that talk about them meeting the requirements for the best, best management practice. And the research I've done on the odor control is that it's, it's constantly upgrading, and still, the carbon filter is the best option for odor control, but there are other ways to look at it. But as we put in here, we have addressed the comments. If you look at my response to the planner's memo, we talked about how and what we are proposing to require the tenants to do, and then also have a note on the plan that at a minimum, they have to have carbon filter controls, as your ordinance says. It said that, your ordinance on 820, 822-5.4 A2, with the caveat, says the best control technology for marijuana cultivation facilities is carbon filtration. So, you know, that's, you know, the best it is now. We put that on our plan, saying that, you know, that at a minimum, that's what you have to have. And then as it goes through and is brought in for the tenant fit-out, it's reviewed in code enforcement office to say, okay, here is your, your odor control plan. I see that you have carbon filters. That meets the intent of the ordinance.
How do you monitor the level of odor control, especially if you, first of all, is there a cumulative effect when you have multiple growers in the same area?
There really isn't, because the, the, the air gets scrubbed by the carbon filters or the other type of filters. So each individual section or each individual portion of these multi, I'll call it multi-unit growers, they all have their own odor control. So the air coming out of the odor control doesn't have a smell to it, just like the guy next door, his odor control's working and doesn't have a smell to it.
Right. Individually, it is.
There's fans involved that suck the air in, that suck fresh air in, and then as the discharge air goes through the carbon filter to take care of that. Yeah, I mean, and there are, you know, there are several multi-unit growing facilities in North Burwick, in Sanford and Wells, and if you drive by them, you won't smell.
Is, but the human nose is not the tool that's used to monitor?
Yeah, I think it is, because you're going to get, you would get a neighbor complaint because, you know, smells like a skunk.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, and that's really what it is. Being on the playing board in North Burwick, we had a situation where there is a facility there that their odor control was not proper, was not working properly, and the requirement was that they went in and had that fixed, due to residents nearby that complained about that. And it was addressed.
Could you clarify? It's possible in Phase One, there could be more than two tenants.
There could be, but most likely, based on my experience with-
I understand. You're saying-
But, yeah, there could be.
The market reality is there should only be two, but there could be more than-
There could be three, yeah, exactly. It's going to be dictated by the market, of somebody that wants to pay-
But the way the numbers play out, there's one facility, there'll be, let's say, two providers. Each one of those can have mature plants of five or six levels. So that's 12 ultimate, ready-to-go clients, which can-
Yeah.
And they can come in periodically to the site to get-
The clients would come in, yeah, and there are rules on how much product that, the medicine that they can get, and how often they can get it. I want to say it's, it's a small amount, and they can only get their medicine once a week. I think, I think that's the soonest turnaround. I don't, that's sticking in my head, and if I'm wrong, Paul, or somebody-
So the 8,500 square feet on Phase One then is because you'll have a lot of immature plants, not quite there yet.
Yeah, that's right. And that's why, and that's why they need the space, because they have that, the cycle, the growth cycle of the plant. And in order to keep their medicine flow, they have the, the product as it grows and cycles through.
Yeah. There's different stages. So they'd have a couple of different rooms for each room.
How would the code enforcement officer, so say there's a complaint, how would the code enforcement officer figure out which caregiver is violating the odor control?
You'd be able to smell which one it is.
I think it would be very easy.
You would be able to identify it just by walking, like, around the perimeter of the building?
Yeah. If you went inside each one-
Because they're all going to have exhaust fans, like, in their area?
Well-
And that's where you'd smell it coming from?
Yeah, or the doors.
Or the doors.
Yeah. But if there's, if it's a sealed room with scrubbers, you wouldn't smell anything. With the carbon filters, it, you'd be surprised. Either that or even ionizers, if they have any air ionizers, you won't smell anything. And-
Are those throwaway filters, or are they cleansed?
Well, technically, you can recharge them, but most people don't. You have to use ozone generator, and, but no, most of the time, it's just, once every year, you replace the filters.
Once a year?
Yeah.
Isn't there some sort of, I'm trying to figure, I actually was talking to someone who was, who's a chemist, and isn't there some sort of, under the, you know, ideal conditions, there's some amount of, I can't remember what it is, like, it's not, I mean, carbon dioxide is what plants like, but there's something else, too. Am I, like, crazy? There was another something that they like to inject into the air in a grow facility to help make the plants grow better, and I can't-
Well, you add carbon dioxide.
Well, right, all plants need that. But this was something specific, I thought, to help with the budding or the quality of the buds, I don't know.
Wow, Kathy.
Like I said, I was talking to a chemist, so he was going way over my head anyway, but.
I have a question on the final plan with all three phases. I don't see any other parking spots delineated. Are you assuming that you're only going to need six spots even when the whole project is built out?
I can add them to the plan to show that where the addition would be.
It would be good to show it, yeah.
Because we have that interior kind of, of the horseshoe.
Yeah.
It's going to be gravel and paved. You see where we have the dumpster in the backside?
Yes, sir, yeah.
So we can delineate more spaces out there.
And you're saying only, like, box trucks would be going in and out if even that?
Yeah, we won't, there won't be a loading dock, I mean, I think most of the stuff will be...
It's just, it's kind of a sharp angle, you're not saying eighteen wheelers are going in there.
No.
Any other questions?
Did the fire chief have to review this also? Just a question, because it is a kind of a sharp angle for that.
Well, I think for any conditional use like that, we require the fire chief to review it.
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to go see the chief.
Okay.
I will.
I have a quick question. I see the septic and stuff, is there a separate ag drainage?
Yeah, we're working on where that's going to go and how that's going to flow.
That was, that was one of my questions, because I know runoff, water runoff, and a lot of those systems has a lot of problems in California with the over fertilization.
Over, yeah, yeah. We got to look at that, how that gets treated.
Okay.
Yeah, but there, and I know in the state of Maine, there's no...
There's nothing yet.
There's nothing that dictates where it needs to go.
Right.
Our thought process, and we're talking with it, is that, yeah, inside the building, there'll be some floor drains that, as it discharges out...
There's some containment areas.
You know, some sort of septic tank on the backside before it goes out.
Okay.
So it pre-treats before it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nothing from inside the building will go into the stormwater?
Nothing from the, inside the building will go into the, into that detention pond. There'll be other flows for other outside areas.
That's just the outside areas.
It could be a dry well for that, for that area, you know, for the excess water that comes down through the floor drains.
What else?
Niles?
David? Kathy?
Needing some more time, I think, to look at the plans more thoroughly.
Do you, do you want another couple weeks for the next meeting to come back in, or do we, do we think about doing a site visit out there? In the meantime, maybe next meeting? Even though we don't have a, you know, approved application, we could still go out for a site visit, take a look at the property, because it's across, it's adjacent to the ATM, right, Northeast Credit Union?
It's almost, it's directly across from Pine Road. Yeah, real close to that, yeah. It's on the South Berwick side of the ATM.
There's been a cut in the trees there, that would be the drive area?
Yeah, yeah, that cut was put in a while ago, yep.
So it's, it's tree, there's trees there now, it's not cleared? Okay.
There are some trees, there's a little bit of a cleared area, but there are trees there, yep. And the idea here is that we'll keep what we can for the buffer along Route Four and the backside.
But, so this is sketch plan, application phase right now, and because it's so new, I mean, for most of us, you know, dealing with this, how do we know when the, I mean, on a regular subdivision, you know when the plan is deemed complete, and you can stop the clock ticking? Difficult for us to figure out when the application is complete to get into the preliminary and final, I would think.
Well, you don't need to do a preliminary and final, Paul, because this isn't a subdivision, it's just site plan review. But, you know, it, all the typical, you know, conditional use kind of factors come in, and I'm trying to think, I think this actually, boy, I can't remember what my memo even said, but with the amount of square footage being proposed, it might even come under site plan review, although I can check on that.
The memo says that.
Yeah, okay, good, thank you. So, you know, you follow the, you know, the submission requirements for those, you know, permits. The fact that this is a medical marijuana production facility, you look at your, your section eight dot five, I guess it is, for, you know, medical marijuana, which is your performance standards, which...
Eight two five.
Eight two five.
Thank you, which Jeff has been addressing, I mean, the biggest one probably is the odor control. The other performance standards had to do with keeping, you know, a certain amount of distance from, I think, a thousand...
Yep.
From schools and daycare facilities and drug and alcohol.
How close is this to the Montessori school?
The Montessori school's a little over sixteen hundred feet away.
Okay, so that's the first thing that popped into my mind, yeah.
Right, yeah, that's the first thing that popped into our heads, too.
Yeah, and the response memo that you have, I know you guys haven't had a chance to review that, I've listed on the left-hand column the requirements of eight point two five, and then our response on the right-hand side.
And just, just to cover all our bases, there's nobody who's, who has a home daycare or anything like that?
No, that we're aware of.
Yeah, that they weren't aware of.
That's permitted, right?
That's permitted, right, yeah.
Yeah, I think we've gone through the typical site plan checklist items, covered those on the plan with the plan submission.
So what would you like to do, Kathy, another couple weeks you need?
Yes, I think so, and that, that will give Jeff time to get the fire chief's response to, on that kind of narrow or sharp angle there.
Will you have your water discharge plan completed by two weeks from now?
We, we'll have an indication, but there's nothing that requires us to do any permitting for a water discharge plan. Oh, you're talking about a stormwater plan?
No, but...
For the runoff.
Hydronic runoff.
We'll have, we can add details to the plan that describe that, but there's no permitting through, like, you know...
But you'll have something for us to look at?
Yep.
And I guess the final question I have for the board, you know, is, yes, I think it'd be good for all of us to have a couple weeks to take this in, but I think the other thing is, I think the board needs to think while you're looking at this, whether you do want to consult another expert, you could consult another engineer to look at the plans and, you know, make sure that, you know, everything is the way that it might optimally be for a facility like this. There may be some engineers that I could, you know, find, that have, like, looked at these types of facilities before, but keep that in mind.
Is Joe still our CEO?
Yeah, sort of.
Has Joe looked at these plans?
Has Joe what?
Has Joe looked at these plans?
I don't know if he has.
Yeah, we've had discussions with Joe regarding the project.
Okay, has he looked at the most recent ones?
I'm not sure if he has or not.
Yeah, I don't think he has. He's not spending that much time here anymore, honestly, and he, and that's why he's not here tonight, he's bowing out.
Yeah, so I mean, I think, I think at a minimum, that our code enforcement for the town should look at it to see what they think, right?
Right. We don't have it.
We don't have one, so what do we do in this situation?
What I can do is, I'll talk to Joe, and I'll make sure that he looks at these plans and...
I mean, I don't want to twist Joe's, I don't want to get into the nitty-gritty of the whole thing, but I don't, if Joe's not employed by the town anymore, I certainly don't expect him to take a comprehensive review, and I don't think that would be fair for him to do that.
He is, he is still doing some work for the town on a very limited basis, but I'll ask him if he can take a look. Definitely, and, and, you know, he might actually have some input on the public safety aspects, for sure, too, because of the hat he wears.
Is it you, as our contractual planner, or the planning board ourselves, is it up to us or you to find out from the town what we are going to do for code enforcement officer? You know, if that's in the works and...
Steve has been, Steve has been running an advertisement for a while now. I just, what I, what I've heard, and this is only just, you know, once in a while from Joe, is that there's a lot of difficulty finding a suitable person.
Because it's a part-time position?
Yeah.
Now, does Southern Maine Planning have any, like, per diem CEOs? What's the requirement to be a CEO?
Well, you have to...
Like, can I be a CEO?
You can take a bunch of tests and be a CEO, you have to take, you have to be certified by the state, there's a number of exams.
Right, I figured, okay.
You've got to have Hawaiian shirts.
And that's a prerequisite, and a radio.
English muffin.
Okay, so I think obviously, we need another couple weeks. In those two, do we want to take a site visit in two weeks, or do we want to wait on that?
I'd like to read all the stuff before, you know, start looking, because I'm not sure what I'm going to do.
I mean, we're going to go out there, we're going to take a site visit to see an opening into some trees, and that's essentially, I think, a lot of snow in the ground. And, you know, sunset around four thirty-five every day, we're going to have to get out there really early, so kind of what we've done before, maybe on your weekend trips to the transfer station.
Just pull over and take a look.
I've had to be reminded to call the transfer station, it's not the dump anymore. To drive by there on a Saturday, just kind of scout it out. Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm going to do sometime when I'm driving between the South Berwick and Burke, I'm just going to stop and look.
If you're going through South Berwick, give me a shout, because we're right there, so we'll meet you up there and walk the site.
Okay.
Or any of the board members want to do it, too, gladly meet that. Again, this, you know, this is a site plan review, you have a certain section in your ordinance that talks about medical marijuana. I feel that we've addressed those, those bullet points in that side of it, and that we would like to continue with our site plan review as, as fast as we can. I will meet with the chief, you know, we did submit our information back in December, so we're ready to keep moving forward with this project.
Okay, we'll put you on the agenda for the next meeting, so the next meeting will be... February first.
Right.
So we'll put you back on the agenda for February first.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Misty, unless you are just so enthralled by our planning board meeting, you're also welcome to, you're welcome to leave, this is, if you want, or you could stay.
I thought at the end of the meeting that you were going to talk a little bit more about the village over there, so I was going to...
Thank you. Sometimes people feel...
No, it's really good.
Sometimes people feel a little weird to get up and leave during a meeting, but...
We're not, nothing offends us, trust me.
Leaving is not one of them.
That's not one of them.
Moving on to, in continuing a new business, we are looking at a sketch plan tonight for one fifteen Old Pine Hill Road, Matthew seven dash forty-seven LRB leasing, this is Old Pine Hill Road North, right?
Yes.
Okay. Kathy, do you want to have anything?
So, sorry, I'm trying to get organized here. So this application is proposing three apartment buildings of six units each on a fairly large piece of property at the north end of Old Pine Hill Road. I think, I think it's interesting to me, the way the parking has been arranged, that's kind of an interesting layout. I think it's, I think it's a good idea in a lot of ways, because it seems to use less roadway that way. I think the other thing that the board should keep in mind here is that there are some waivers to consider with this particular project, and there are some wetlands. I think the application, or the applicant is hoping to connect to public water and sewers, so all the calculations involving the net residential area, keep, you know, are predicated on that. And the, I think the waivers involve the stormwater management, high-intensity soil tests, and what was the other one?
Sidewalks.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Chris Mandy from Civil Consultants, I'm here on behalf of Les Bodwell, LRB leasing, this is Mr. Bodwell. I think you have, some of you anyways, have some experience with this project up on Cemetery Road. So this, this project, as we said, is three six-unit multifamily buildings, I have a couple twists there, I want to feel you off, or this is a sketch plan, so this is kind of investigatory on our part with regard to concepts, and kind of looking to have a little bit of a charrette, perhaps, with regard to the board's thoughts of what they might like to see in a project like this. As the planner said, we've calculated preliminary densities, net residential densities on approximately a little bit more than five-acre lot, and it will support eighteen, actually may support nineteen, may actually even support a little more, but the present numbers are showing about eighteen units. So the configuration of the three buildings, well, let me, let me take a step backwards. The current use of the property, it's primarily open, there is a small amount of forest on part of the land, it's agricultural hayfield, horse paddock kind of area. There's a shed, a large barn connected to a house, another barn that's not connected to anything, and then what appears to be maybe either an old cow shed or chicken shed located on the property. The intent would be to raise all of those, they're all in fairly sad shape at this point in time. The, the, a couple comments were made by the planner, one with regard to the configuration of the parking. Our intent there is really to show where, we may not be able to build something like that, but the intent in, in mostly having to do with topography and so forth, we haven't gone that far yet in the design to know. Our intent, though, is to try to minimize the pavement on the, on the project, and to have as little cover as we can. Another comment that was made with regard to waivers dealing with stormwater management, that was simply put in there. We're hoping, and we're fairly certain, that we'll be able to fall under the one-acre increase in impervious surface on the site that DEP uses for the threshold for the DEP application for a permit by rule versus a detailed permit that requires treatment as well as time-of-flow type considerations. That's all we're really addressing in that comment, is that we're hoping to go with the standard level of review and not...
You're hoping to avoid chapter five.
Right, and not going into the next level of review. We're not trying to get out of anything with regard to not, not giving a stormwater management analysis on the property. With regard to the soils mapping, since we are going to be relying, hopefully, on public sewer, the, the medium-intensity soil survey that's available shows the entire site populated by somewhat poorly drained soils in the area in the center, where we're showing wetlands on the plan, and the rest of it, I think they show it as moderately well-drained. Our analysis on the site is that the wetlands are, in fact, poorly drained, and that there are small amounts of somewhat poorly drained on the margin of those, and then, you know, proceeding into somewhat well-drained or moderately well-drained soils. Our hope would be to, number one, either use the medium-intensity soil survey as the basis for calculating net residential density, or alternatively, to just map the poorly drained and very poorly drained soils, and not get too worried about the, whether the, whether they're excessively drained, or somewhat excessively drained, or well-drained, to not put too fine a point on it. So we would look for some direction along what might be acceptable to the board with regard to that type of analysis.
Chris, I have a question.
Yes?
Were you aware of section eight dot six, which does deviate somewhat from the net residential table that's, that's in, or is that other table, the site, six dot five?
Okay.
So there's a, actually, there's a performance standard that's applicable to the, and it talks about the soils.
Okay, and what section was that, I'm sorry?
That's actually eight dot six.
Eight dot six, yeah.
I was, I was very late in getting this memo out to the board.
Okay.
I'm happy to give you my copy before I leave tonight.
Oh, that'd be great, sure.
Just take it, because I cite it there.
I may have, I prepared this quite a while ago, off the top of my head, I can't remember whether or not I looked at that.
No worries.
Okay. Certainly, we'll, we'll address it as we before.
Okay, sure, yeah.
So this is Ferguson Brook behind here.
I'm sorry?
This is, this wetlands is actually Ferguson Brook, which comes behind the condos, behind the library, goes across into Penny Pond. That's what this is.
That's correct, right.
Okay.
In this area, it's not a brook, or it's, you know, it's, it's not delineated as a, as a... Yeah. In this area, there's not even a channel. It's hardly, I mean, certainly wetland, but it's, there's no standing water, at least. I think I was there in October, and then again through January, there's no standing water at that time, just mushy ground. There is, on the adjacent property, there is a small culvert under the driveway that, you know, would drain whatever water moves through there during storms onto this property and then onward from there. Let's see, other comments. A question for the board that maybe you can help me with. I didn't run into anything directly in the ordinance that addressed this. The applicant is perhaps undecided at this moment in time with regard to whether to pursue this project as simply a multifamily project with rental units, or perhaps as a multifamily project with three condominium units, each building being a condominium that might eventually, maybe not immediately, but might eventually have a different owner, and then they would each rent their six units. Or perhaps even approval as a condominium with 18 units that he would then manage and maybe hold on to all 18 at first, and then maybe they sell them out over time. And my question is, is in the review process here, if we present it simply as rental units initially, if he wants to do a condominium conversion down the road, do we need to come back for subsequent approval, even though, you know, we're not changing anything other than the pattern of ownership? Does the board have any feedback on that question?
Well, I think with the condos, you end up with, we've reviewed homeowners association rules.
Homeowners' associations.
And that may be the biggest difference between apartments and condos.
Okay.
Maybe you...
I don't really, well, I don't know about the review process. I mean, and I haven't done any here with us.
A lot of condos eventually turn over to becoming rentals.
Yeah.
Well, because you can rent condos generally.
Yeah, you can. If it's a condo, right, you can rent it, I think.
Suburban nature is late. No, not, I mean, some condo docs have it that they cannot be rentals, but I don't know.
That's within the condo rules themselves.
Yes.
So does this board typically, if someone submits a condominium project as part of your review process, do you review the condominium documents?
Yes.
You do? Okay.
And for subdivisions, too, we would review...
The homeowners.
The homeowners' association is the big kicker.
Okay, okay.
Especially with retention ponds and that kind of stuff.
Right. So the potential, at least as things look at this point in time, if there was a clear intent to go to the condominium, you know, immediately or down the road, that it, there would be two possibilities. One would be to present it as a condominium right up front, and the other would be is if at some time down the road, we decided that we're going to go from purely a rental situation to a condo, we would come back and then go through a second review process at that point in time. And that would then primarily be the structure of the condominium that was reviewed rather than the physical improvements.
It'd be, you know, just an amendment probably to the subdivision application, basically.
Okay. Thanks for the guidance there. That wasn't entirely clear to me right from reading the ordinance.
Right.
I think that covers most of...
What about the other waiver for sidewalks?
Oh, sidewalks. Thank you for reminding me. Right. My basis for looking for the waiver on sidewalks, I mean, obviously, there would be sidewalk connecting the parking area to the buildings and so forth, but I'm not thinking in terms of sidewalks along either of the two roads, given that they wouldn't connect to anything. There are no sidewalks out there.
There's no sidewalks.
Yet.
Yet. We were just talking about this last meeting.
There would be no sidewalks yet. In part of the recreational master plan and discussions that we've had for a number of years, that is one of the areas in town that I know that is looked at to have sidewalks.
Well, this side of the road that this project would be on has a ditch, too. So it's the road, then a ditch. So where would the sidewalk be on the inside of it?
In the driveway?
Okay. The other side of Old Pine Hill Road, I can't think if it has ditches there or not.
I'm not saying to have a sidewalk on the frontage.
Oh, okay.
What I'm saying is, would it be, you know, in the driveway there, because you have people walking? How big is that driveway? What's the width of that? Is that 25 feet?
Basically, excuse me for just a minute.
Yep.
Yeah, so the parking spots themselves are basically 10 by 20-foot parking spots, and then the aisle adjacent to them in this area is 24 feet wide, and then there's the center area.
No, the actual driveway, the curb cut there in the road, is that 25?
Oh, at this area, 24.
Yeah, 24, 24.
You said you would have sidewalks on-site. Where would they be?
Well, presently, in this configuration, what we're showing is just sidewalks on the fronts of the buildings.
Okay.
Connecting to the parking area.
But you wouldn't have anything inside the driveway?
We might, and I just, I'm looking for direction with regard to...
So you're looking for a waiver to not put sidewalks in where?
On the road. Well, hopefully, we don't want to construct sidewalks along the sideline of Old Pine Hill Road, you know, for general access up and down the side of the road.
There's a culvert in there anyway, right?
On this side.
Mm-hmm.
Right, but you could require sidewalks, you know, 50 feet back if that was your desire. Just looking for some direction along those.
What are the size of each rental unit? So it's two bedrooms. How many square feet per unit?
About 1,000 square feet, 1,000 square feet.
Be one and two-bedroom, right?
Two.
Two-bedroom, all of them.
And would be any common areas, laundry rooms, lobby, anything like that?
No.
So it would all be off-site laundry and no play area or anything?
I'm sorry, they do have, each unit has their own laundry closet.
Oh, okay.
And you also mentioned play areas on your other buildings, I think you...
So when you talk about play areas, are you talking yard?
Yard, playground, a common area, community garden, benches.
So without, kind of stepping on Chris's toes...
I'm happy to have it.
This was a Chris invention. It's probably not going to be the configuration we do based on the topography. We're thinking more along the lines of having the buildings parallel to the road and having parking behind, so we can have garages under. Because of, if we do that, if we go that route, we won't, on Cemetery Road, we have patios, 10 by 12 patios behind the building, so that they have a place for a picnic table and so forth. So if we do the parking here, we won't have that patio area, but what I'm considering is putting in a couple of different picnic area-type situations, so that people have a place to go to keep a grill or so forth.
Where would you put, you'd have commercial trash pickup?
Yes.
Dumpsters, where would those go?
Well, again, I think, you know, at this point, just for the sketch and the...
Oh, because you don't know where the buildings are going to go. Gotcha.
It's hard to say.
Yeah.
My guess would be, you know, we'd probably have, it may even end up being two buildings, depending on how much separation we can get in between the buildings. So my thought is to have the driveway here where it is and come down, and the dumpster would be right, you know, and the building would just come down and scoop it, and then parking behind the buildings.
Would you have, what would you have for lighting? Just building lighting? Or would you have lamp posts on the sidewalks or...
On the sidewalks is typically what we do. And this, I'd have to think about that a little bit on the backs of the buildings with parking right behind the building. They may need light for the parking lot that direction.
That's right across, that's across from Morning Dove, right?
That's correct.
Is there a lamp post out there?
I don't know. We haven't gotten that far.
I don't think so.
Do you have one outside of here?
No, no, but the library has lots of lights.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
She's a...
Where was that lighting plan when that went into effect?
I don't know, because it goes right into my bedroom window. Thanks, Paul.
You got a baby gun?
What was that, 2004, 2005?
Sometimes we call them, we're like, can you just turn the lights off?
So they leave them on all night?
Yes.
No, you're kidding.
Does anybody have any other questions or things that they...
So these are two-story buildings or one-story buildings?
Well, two stories in the front, so, and then the back will have the garage under.
You know, when I saw this a couple weeks ago, that this was coming before, so I walked by there the other day, and I knew what was there before, but I never realized how big that lot was. That's like a farm.
It is, yeah.
It was a farm.
Yeah.
Didi's Leather, right?
I'm sorry?
That was Didi's Leather. She had horses.
That's correct.
Yeah, I'm amazed at how big that is.
I was going to say, there's still animals there, because we can hear them. Actually, I think the kids go over and feed the whatevers out there, cows, horses.
Now, did you, you bought this already?
I have it under agreement.
Under, okay.
Tell me the square footage of each building?
36 by 96.
38 by 96.
This says 3,400 square feet, but you've got six units of 1,000 square feet.
Two stories.
The footprint is roughly of these, if you just make a rectangle, is roughly 38 feet by 96 feet.
So each unit is 1,000 square feet, but the footprint is only half of that, because it's a townhouse-style unit?
Oh, that's why I asked if it was two-story. Okay, got you. All right, good. Thank you.
So you have three across and then two height-wise, or do you have, how does that work? How did six units, you have three on each floor?
So it's, one unit would be two stories, and, you know, I don't know if you remember the buildings on Cemetery Road, but we're thinking basically the same building as those. So you would have your own entrance, you walk in, you have, you know, kitchen, living room, bedrooms upstairs. So each unit would be side by side.
And you're going to manage them similar to your other properties?
Yes.
Where's the rest of the family tonight?
I know, normally you have, there's a whole group.
It's only the sketch plan.
Big guns for the...
I was at the hair salon, and my daughters had the option of going with her to the hair salon and meet at the planning board meeting.
Yeah, gotcha.
I would have picked planning board.
We're not offended at that, either.
Do you have anything else for us, did we answer your questions?
I think so. The sidewalk, so as I say, you know, the waiver that we're potentially looking for on the sidewalk is just, you know, we hope to not have to begin the sidewalk construction along Pine Hill Road.
I will make a comment on that, that we've been talking about it, as Mike said, and it's been an active talking point for several years, and it was actually active even for the three-lot job just across the street pretty much. And I think with the library, the sidewalks are going to be an issue. I mean, that's, I mean, it's in the plans to get sidewalks by the library heading down Sullivan Street. And when you add density, they will get used.
Yeah.
I think it would be best to have them on the other side, though, because of the library.
Yeah, that's all something we can, you know, that's true. I mean, it makes sense to connect up to something that exists, you know, that was the stuff that we were talking about.
Well, I mean, you have to start somewhere, and I don't want to say we're going to start with your property, and this is going to be the, you know, the sidewalk scheme for the town of Berwick, and it starts with Les Bodwell, you know? I'm not saying that, but I'm saying realistically, you know, I think we're going to have to take a long, hard look at it. You know, I know that you're trying to save the expense of it.
Well, quite frankly, it's not about the expense, and, you know, I take a lot of pride in my properties, and if putting sidewalks in the front of this building is going to be the right thing for the future plan, and it's going to be the right thing for my buildings, then, you know, we certainly could talk about that. I'm not, you know, it's not about saving a few thousand dollars on these properties and them not being correct.
Another, just to throw another thought out there, if it's premature to construct sidewalks on the property, another possible approach would be to, I guess, have a donation or a contribution made toward a future sidewalk fund, something about that.
I might want to check with your client before...
And, you know, when we discussed that, too, we talked about that, and I don't think that we have the authority to do that. I don't even think the selectmen have the authority to do that either, you know, because that's almost like a, I see what you're saying, yeah, but to other people, it could look like a backdoor handshake that, I see what you're saying.
We, didn't we agree last week that we were going to ask Kathy to get us a legal opinion as to whether we can do that or not?
Oh, really? The sidewalk improvement?
Minutes come out and we'll read that. We discussed that last week, that we'd like a legal opinion as to what we can or cannot do on that subject.
It's kind of a quandary, because some places, like up on Cemetery Road, we waived the sidewalks up there, but you did something else. You put trails and that kind of stuff. It just doesn't make sense to have two miles of the sidewalk that goes to nowhere, you know?
So the question I would ask is, does the town, you know, has this just been conversations for years, or does the town actually have a master plan to put sidewalks in?
It's in process. It has not been finished. It has certainly not been put to the town for a vote, but the expectation is, in the not-too-distant future, that that will happen. So it hasn't, nothing has happened yet.
You know, that's my only thing, is, you know, if we put sidewalks in, and then the town says, well, you know what, it is more feasible to put them on the other side, now I got to dash.
And that's a good point as to whether it's premature for us to do it without that master plan having been approved, and that's certainly something we will talk about.
I know John Stoll started working on a sidewalk plan, and he has places that he has shown where it makes a lot of sense to have sidewalks, and I know the library was one place that was part of that conversation.
Well, certainly would make sense, right? People could walk to the library.
It does, and a lot of people, the small subdivisions, don't like sidewalks. Kids like to ride bikes, and, you know, they don't like curvings, and, you know, a lot of reasons. A lot of it has to do with stormwater, you know, you have to manage stormwater.
However, at the same time, you know, I'll go and walk the dog, and I have sidewalks in my neighborhood, there's sidewalks on School Street, but once I get onto Old Pine Hill Road, better hold on.
Yeah.
And Sullivan Street, too.
Mm-hmm.
So, but you're on the same side as the library.
Yeah.
True.
And you're only, I think, one lot, there's only...
No, there's two lots, yeah.
The condos and one other, and that's it.
One house, yeah, and it's the next property.
So I think there's also, you know, from our side of it, you know, this is most likely not going to be the configuration of the buildings. So I think, you know, when Chris and I sit down with this a little bit and, you know, really come up with the configuration, I think at the sketch plan, what we really wanted to propose was the 18 units that we're talking about, and then, you know, dial in exactly what we're going to do. And, you know, I'm trying to think about what these buildings are going to look like on the road. I have to have some walkway coming out of them. Where does that walkway go to? You know, I can't just have a front door and grass. So, you know, maybe Chris and I can look at something, and if you guys, if you guys do have any, anything from John Stoll or anything that even closely represents what you guys are thinking about doing there, you know, I'd certainly entertain taking a look at it and, you know, contributing my piece. Again, you know, on a project like this, you know, a sidewalk in front of these buildings is not going to make or break the project. I mean, I don't want to spend money that doesn't make sense, but if it is part of the town's plan, then, so then I would ask, you know, are the other residents going to have to pay for their part of the sidewalk?
Well, that would be my question, too. I mean, so...
Anything that's existing, if the town proposes to build sidewalks, let's say up Sullivan Street, that would be at the expense of the town. That wouldn't be at the expense of the homeowner for existing properties.
Right. So why would we...
We're getting a little ahead of ourselves.
Yeah.
So it's just something that obviously is on our minds, but we're a long way from having any answers for you at this point.
Right.
Yeah, I'm certainly willing to continue the dialogue about it, and, you know, whatever makes the most sense and what's going to make...
But I think, I think you've been here before, and I think you know that we have waived sidewalks yourself, and it's a topic of conversation, I guess is one way to look at it. But this is contrary to what you did on Cemetery Road. This is the area that the town is actively thinking about sidewalks, and I think if we can get, I can talk to Steve or Dave Campbell, try to get the plan that John Stoll has. Have you seen that?
I remember the sidewalk inventory.
I remember the inventory, yeah. I didn't know it was the inventory.
He actually has it on a map. I've seen it on the screen, but I don't know if it exists on paper or...
Maybe James has it, or maybe John has it.
James must have it. He's got John's laptop.
James worked on, he worked on it with him. We should ask James when he gets back, then.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So I wouldn't expect to be back in two weeks, maybe we'd be back in a month.
So, yeah, we're gonna talk a little bit, just tonight, we're gonna talk about requirements, timeline requirements as well, so I would say, if you went to the planning office, I would say, at a minimum, I would expect a two-week wait, and if you fall, if you come like on a, you know, a day where the next Thursday, we're gonna have a meeting, I would expect to go to the meeting after that, just to give enough time, so...
You would want it two weeks in advance.
Two, then a minimum two weeks in advance, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, moving on to informational items. Kathy, you were mentioning in an email to me this week about the timeline requirements, or the requirements for getting on the agenda, and, you know, between you and Ja, the way that I look at it, between you and James, that's completely your thing, as much time as you feel comfortable with, that you need. I would say, take the most time, there's nothing that's pressing that really comes, that if somebody comes in on a Thursday and there's a meeting the next week, that we have to get them on the agenda. I really don't think so, and that's why I'm saying, I think at a minimum, those two meetings are two weeks, you know, at a minimum. I'm totally fine with that. Is everybody else?
Yep. I think that's the way most towns do it.
It is, even if we had a full-time, thank you.
Thank you.
Even if we had a full-time planner and a full-time, what is James, planning technician?
You always have a different...
It's really technical. I wanna know what's technical about his job, first of all. Maybe that's a question for Steve. But I think two weeks. Is that enough, is that good enough for you?
Yeah, I think it is. James is pretty good at, you know, when, when things aren't electronically available, he'll scan them for me. I think the other thing I'd like to ask for, though, from now on, is electronic submission, because then I don't have to wait for the plans to get mailed to me. So that, that would be good. So what I was thinking is, we would just put together a schedule, a submission deadline schedule, and just post it in Town Hall and put it on the town website, so that it's very clear, this is, these are the dates for these meetings going forward.
Would that be for any kind of a plan, site plans versus submissions?
Yeah, I think it would, for new submissions. I feel like it's okay sometimes, not always, but, but often, you know, the two weeks between the two week, the two meetings a month, it's sometimes, if an application is already in process and they just have to tweak a few things, they could probably submit it, you know, and get it on for the next meeting, and it wouldn't be a problem. So I think what we've done in South Burwick is we've made, we've made that exception. If it's an ongoing application and there's not gonna be major revisions to it, then they don't need to abide by the new application deadlines. I think what we did there is we gave them a week instead of two.
This is just for initial filing?
Yeah, for new applications that we haven't looked at before, right?
Whether it's a conditional use or a major subdivision?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm completely fine with that.
Okay. Everyone else okay with it?
Yeah.
And I know the other thing that we were talking about, that we said we would just get back around to, is the village overlay. Are we, it seemed like we were in consensus of, of getting this on, you know, to changing this, what we just talked about. So if we, you know, agree to that, is that something, because I know that you're working on the changes as well, for the, for the land use ordinance?
Yes.
So we went over that in the last meeting, and I don't think that that was one of the things that we, we talked about it, but that wasn't one of the points on there.
That would just be a map change, not a language change, right?
Right, it would be a map change, but there's, there's rules for map changes that are a little bit different than for the ordinance changes.
What do you mean, rules?
State statute rules, and also, Burwick has adopted some, you know, guidelines for, for what happens, so the seventy-five dollar submission fee is one example of a Burwick-specific permitting fee for requesting, you know, that you, your property gets a zoning district boundary change.
But if, if the board decides to just add Wilson Street and School up to Logan, then there wouldn't be an applicant.
That's right.
It'd be our initiative, and no one would have to pay the seventy-five dollars.
That's right, although I don't know if Andrew's paid yet or not.
Well, I know we considered that when we first did the village overlay, and maybe we should've done it then.
But when we did it, we knew that we would have to make adjustments.
We made, we did the best that we could do with the information that we had.
But we did think about putting the opt-in.
We did, we did.
And the opt-out, right.
It's clear, it's time for an adjustment.
Yeah.
Are we doing, so, are we doing both sides of School Street? The side of Cumberland Farms as well, or is it just the side?
He said both sides, but I...
Then we just have to delineate where...
When you come down from the corner, even Nick Zip is no longer there now.
Yeah, yeah.
The fire station.
The other side isn't included, is it? The Cumberland Farms, that isn't in the overlay, right?
No.
No.
Yeah, I would think not, just to fill in those properties along the existing perimeter.
Yeah.
But the whole Esserbrook, including Burwick, the old Burwick High School, I believe is, right, including Burwick High School.
Right.
And then you, I mean, you have three houses behind the Methodist Church, and you have a church, then you've got a few residential, two residential before you go into...
This might help.
Yeah.
Here we go. There's the old Burick High School. There's one residential there.
This is what we're talking about, these here.
Yeah.
You already did this work? Did you do this?
No, this is, this is actually, I think, what may have been included in your Form-Based Code, Village Overlay Form-Based Code.
But what's the light blue?
This is the drawing that Mike Lazzle did.
What's the significance of white blue?
That, so, so I think that is, is that R1?
That is R1, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what that is.
But so is this.
Yep.
So actually, we would be taking this whole area here, everything that's not orange would be the village overlay, because the Esterbrook School is in the village overlay.
Yeah, but then you've got, here, you've got the church, church, one residential, and I think two residential before you get to Roma Joe's.
And then you have the, what is that, Farwell's?
Oh, that's Dana Hall's, Dana Hall's cards.
Right.
For Paul Kennedy, who, I'm not sure who it is.
Right.
Yeah, so we, I think a ten-minute discussion on where you draw the lines, and then we just propose it.
Will we meet the deadline for the next town meeting vote?
Yeah. Especially if, you know, we do it next month.
We have sheets already that, you know, we have changes that have been written up already, and that could tag along.
Yeah.
And that could help, like Misty and...
Yep.
Well, so are we just saying, so, putting the blue into the village overlay?
Pretty much. Yeah, so, I guess what we need to do is, I probably need to just make a GIS map for you guys.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Have to notify all the abutters, like there were rules you're saying.
Yep.
That are...
You just notify all the abutters and...
Public hearing?
Public hearing.
Public hearing, yeah.
That would be good, to educate them all on what this means, because I think when people get notices in the mail that they're gonna be in the village overlay, they might freak out a little bit.
This is actually part of the application we had given to that.
Might read about it on Facebook.
So do we wanna talk about that next meeting, and, or you wanna just go with that? I mean, we're all in agreement, right?
Well, we could, do we need a motion for anything like that? I mean, where, we can talk about it, and...
Sure, why don't you make a motion, make it before we move.
Can't afford it.
They can say, oh, we want it, you know, where that blue area is, but it's a little hard to say that in a motion.
We need to like...
It is, right.
Yeah.
Well, what if you came up with a GIS map, and we would call that a figure, and we would say that we wanna include this figure in the next land use ordinance, and we make a motion to include...
That will make a motion, yeah.
Yeah, it might be a good idea to have a description to the meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be good, with addresses or whatever, yeah.
So we're looking at the light blue, is that?
Light blue, yep.
So we'll have James put that...
Fill out the perimeter.
Let's see how well James listens to these minutes. So we will have James put that on new business on the next agenda. Any other informational items from the board?
I woke up thinking about new fire station, and I'm wondering why we...
You need more to do.
No, I mean, we, you know, and I know there's a lot of talk. There were three sites, and I think Cemetery Road seems to be coming up, you know, coming up to the top of the pile there, and I'm just wondering why we could not maybe talk about it amongst ourselves and maybe recommend to the, you know, as a planning board. I mean, a fire station's a big thing. And especially with all the imminent growth, you know, downtown, you know, population-wise.
So there was, there was Pine Hill...
Is that something we wanna talk about, is what I'm asking?
Yeah, I mean, I've wanted to. I mean, I think Pine Hill Road was one, Cemetery Road, where was the third site?
I can't remember.
And we're not even considering Esterbrook School for a site, for a public safety complex?
I, we all have our thoughts, and I think that would be a great spot.
The Route Four site, no?
I, I'm not sure if Route Four came up, but I was thinking of the SAD-60 Elementary School site where fronts on 236 and that little back street that used to be 236. I mean, it's easy to get in and out, and, you know.
Oh, down by the, on the way to the sewer?
Yeah, it's, it's right on that straight, you know, great site distance when you pull out, and, but I guess there were reasons why that wasn't considered, and SAD-60 owns it. So it just avoids buying up a piece of property, and it's flat there, it's a space. But, so I was just wondering why, I mean, how did the thinking process that has come about to where we are now? I'm not even sure where we are now, as a town.
If you remember, our last meeting, we requested that we begin quarterly meetings with the Board of Selectment. And I'm not sure who we asked to set that up.
That was me, and I apologize, and I will email, I will email to Tom Wright tomorrow.
Okay. Because I think that's where we're gonna have this discussion.
Well, there was, there was a few things that we wanted to talk about, the comp plan, we wanted to talk about the recreational marijuana ordinance, and we can put on there to talk about the firehouse.
And we may as well put on sidewalks. We can talk with them about sidewalks. I mean, ultimately, they're the policymakers.
At this point, can you just summarize for us in like three words? What towns do in our situation with sidewalks that we want them downtown, we don't have sidewalks every place we want them, how do the towns do it? Do they just pay for it with a warrant article? Do they put a lot of planning into it and do a capital improvement?
Could the impact, the impact fee be put towards that?
That's usually more like stormwater and stuff like that, but, well, TIFs are one way. You know, requiring the sidewalks for new, new development is the tried and true, of course, and capital improvement planning, you know, especially if you're doing it like, you know, five years out, you just keep pushing the sidewalk further each time as you, you know, plan. You just have to plan for it, so that you can put the money aside in the town budget to do it. Yeah, I mean, I've asked James this question before, and I don't think we arrived at an answer, but I was asking him if Old Pine Hill Road and sort of that area, which is R1 and R2, depending on which side of the road you're on, if that was actually part of the old comp plan's growth area, because the copy I have of the comp plan doesn't have me.
Well, hold on a second.
Nineteen sixty-seven, sixty-nine.
Is that the last one that was adopted? No, there had to be a more recent one.
No, it was updated twice since then.
Okay.
But, but there is, I should probably, I brought this in for James, but he's not here, because no one believed me there was a comp plan.
That far away.
Niles didn't believe it. There, you know, ninety-one was, most people refer to ninety-one as the original comp plan. It isn't.
Okay.
And it really hasn't, a lot of parts have not changed very much until very recently.
So is, is that area a future growth area? Is it designated?
I think Sullivan Street was always...
Because they used to require that when you got state certification, you had to have that.
Sullivan Street, School Street, radiating out from the center of town was.
Okay. Which, you know, which makes sense, and also, you know, just having been around here for almost a year now, I, I know that there's a lot of interest in connecting the library and those surrounding neighborhoods to the downtown as well, so it really makes sense to, you know, start with sidewalks.
Then how do you connect, you know, thirty-six units, you know, just outside that area of sidewalks? I mean, they are adding density, those people will use whatever sidewalks who are up in that direction. How do you financially connect that project to paying for a sidewalk, you know, as far as sharing cost, and, you know, that seems to be the issues that we're having.
Right, well, I think, I think your road design requires sidewalks in some cases, doesn't it? So that, you know, so you've got, you've got your regulation on your side there, you know, and you may recall there was some interest on another developer's part of, across the street from the library. He hasn't gone away, just so you know. So I think there is an opportunity.
Yeah, but how do you coordinate it?
That we're concerned about, is every time a request has made for a waiver, they have said yes, and so we're concerned about why all of a sudden would we start saying no? Based on what?
Well, based on the fact that, that you wanna connect that neighborhood, because of the increasing density, you wanna connect that neighborhood to the downtown. I mean, I think, I think you need to turn it around. Why have you been granting those waivers? Your requirements say you're supposed to have sidewalks.
Yeah, and I think it's always been a case-by-case, depending on the location, but a lot of people point that area to Morning Dove Court, that there's no sidewalks in there, and that was waived. That was before my time, and I think, I don't know what the reasoning was for that.
Because it was three lots, I believe.
It was, it was more, it had more to do with stormwater management than anything else, and the general notion that, this sort of the sidewalks to nowhere argument, that there are no other sidewalks out there, and so between the two, that was why I think it was waived.
And we didn't feel with the minimum number of lots he was putting in, I think it was either three or four, we said, are we gonna stick 'em with putting sidewalks in, you know, when you, you start looking at twenty, thirty, or forty units. It's a different animal. I mean, you almost have to make a judgment call, really.
Yeah, and at some point, you know, the town needs to, you know, kind of decide, this is, this is what we want, and this is how we're gonna get there, you know?
Which is why we wanna meet with the selectmen, because they gotta make the call, not us.
Right, yeah, but you do, like I said, you do have your ordinance on your side, you know, just because they ask for a waiver doesn't mean you have to grant it, and actually, you know, most of the time when people, you know, ask for waivers, you'd be well within your, your rights to ask them, well, why should we do that? Tell us why we should do that.
Well, in fact, under the ordinance, we have to, and under the ordinance, we have to say why we did it, so maybe we need to be a little bit more strict about making them give us answers, giving us reasons and having us review their reasons why.
But I think we have stated, though, in the recent past, we have stated, I think, like in Morning Sun, I think we said why we waived. We had reasons.
But we haven't always asked them why they think we ought to waive it. It just sort of become, I think they sort of look at what we've done before, and they say, well, I always waived this, so let's keep waiving.
Right, and the fact that, you know, the applicant that was just here is, is actually willing to build the sidewalk, that he might be a good person to start with, because he's cooperative.
It happens to be that where he wants to put his project is where we're looking for growth, so, I mean, it's right on the R1 edge.
Oh, it's perfect.
There's a lot of difference between that and other projects where we waived, so it does make much more sense.
Yeah, yes.
Great.
Anything else?
Any other dreams, Paul?
For the man's murder.
Oh, stand by, hold on, hold on.
Anything else you'd like to talk to us about?
Lost my memory.
Does the board have anything else they'd like to share?
Well, but Paul informed us on the difference between a republic and a democracy last week.
Oh, I missed that, didn't I?
You'll find that in the minutes.
I was, I was at the Kittery Planning Board, trust me, I'd rather have been here.
You'll also find lots of other things, though we're not in the minute. You'll also find lots of other things, so we're not in the minute.
Yes.
Moving on to public comment session is open, if you'd like to come forward and speak, if there's anything that you want to talk about, feel free to come forward. If not, say nobody come, say nobody come forward, close the public comment session, moving on to adjournment.
I move to adjournment.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
All second.
Second and further discussion, all in favor?